We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council Meeting, August 5th, 2025. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from July the 22nd. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
They're moved.
Motion is second all. If you please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Is anyone from the Council have a question for the City Manager related to tonight's agenda?
I assume we are going to talk about our handout.
The addition that...
Do you want me to talk about that now?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead?
Yeah, I just, there are some adjustments on item 8E3 to two pages in a contract for building plan review. Councilman Griswold had a question just about some clarity, and we fully agree that some clarity was needed. So you've got two replacement pages. Page two of nine for our master services agreement, and then page one of two for our actual task order that's just clarifying some schedule and deliverables, making it clear. And I'll remind you that we're doing the third-party plan review for larger projects to keep our staff moving on its regular workload so it doesn't dominate three to four weeks of their time.
Any questions from the Council for the City Manager? Anything else for us, Ms. Crouch?
No, sir.
I had one quick question for you. You and I talked about this last week, but out on Shelton Road, we're doing a really extensive, it's much more than a repaving job. And we were talking about, what is that? It's a full-depth reclamation project?
Yes.
And so, I didn't know if...
See that as FDR, but not the kind you're thinking of in your documents.
Absolutely. And there's some dirt, sand, whatever you want to call it, that's been laid over the road. Could somebody give us a quick...
I have one of our engineers...
Forty-five second tutorial on that.
Yes, respond in forty-five seconds in English, but I think some citizens think that we have been pouring dirt, or D and J has, all over the road in sand, and that they can't figure out what we're doing. So Brandy Zell, our city engineer, will tell you a little bit about it.
Yes, so full-depth reclamation is basically where they are milling up a deeper surface than they normally would and getting below the asphalt into the original base material, applying a cement mixture back into that, and then putting that back in place before they put the final asphalt back over it. So it is a more extensive resurfacing.
It is.
Does the sand and the dirt play a role how?
Basically, we're improving that base material to where it will be a stable. It had deteriorated so much that we had to do that to improve it, to bring it back to a workable surface.
And you'll see that on Beehive Road and other places. It's a common technique to improve the strength of the road so that we don't have to rip the whole thing out completely, shut it down for months, and rebuild it.
Much more cost-effective than doing just that.
They're making really great progress. I drive it every day, and it's coming along very nicely.
They are. We've had a few citizen or visitors to Auburn concerned about some of that material on their vehicles. Some of you could get pinged, and we're dealing with that. It's not uncommon with this, but I will tell you, we put large signs warning everybody, and a lot of coverage saying this, we're going to keep it open, but, you know, it is under a resurfacing project. So, but if you hear from your constituents about that, we'll put them with our risk manager and deal with it that way.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
There's a move.
We are adjourned, and we will get started right at six o'clock. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council Meeting for August the 5th, 2025. Welcome those who are with us here in the Council chambers. We also welcome those who are listening on WANI and they're watching through our streaming services. With the roll call, David Adams.
Here.
Koblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is our first meeting of the month of August, and so we are excited to tell you about our Employee of the Month, as well as our other outstanding employees with their service awards.
We're proud to introduce you to our August Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Eric Carson, the Water Resource Management Director. It is my honor to nominate Dustin Rogers as Employee of the Month for August 2025. Dustin joined the Watershed Division of Water Resource Management in February of 2020 as a stormwater coordinator. Dustin's duties include implementing the city's erosion and sediment control inspection and enforcement program, performing stormwater post-construction inspections, and performing stormwater outfall inspections, which are all components of the city's Phase Two Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System program. Recently Dustin took the initiative to research utility terrain vehicles to determine which would help perform inspections more efficiently on larger construction sites. Dustin has also maintained his UAS Remote Drone Pilot License, which enables the use of drones for inspections. Both the UTV and the UAS Remote Drone Pilot License positively expand the effectiveness and efficiency of the city's construction site erosion and sediment control inspections. Outside of normal working hours, Dustin has helped the Watershed Division Manager promote the city's MS4 program during the city's annual Bark in the Park event held each March. Dustin organizes and participates in stream cleanups, such as the one on Parkinson Mill Creek that took place last May. Dustin promotes team unity by working with his coworkers in other city departments to complete tasks, such as piloting the drone for pictures of the water board's water tanks and Lake Ogle Tree sinkholes. Dustin does not hesitate to investigate a complaint received from a citizen, and he provides friendly and professional customer service to the citizens of Auburn with distinction. For these reasons and many others, I would like to recognize Dustin Rogers as the August Employee of the Month.
Congratulations to all of our employees. We value everything you do for the city of Auburn. Congratulations to Dustin Rogers for being our Employee of the Month. Under announcements tonight, I just want to say congratulations to the United Way who had an outstanding kickoff last week. The food bank was a little toasty, but there was a bunch of people in there packing meals for those in need in our community, and it was a great way to kick off the United Way's fundraising activities for this year. And I can ask all of our citizens to consider making a contribution to the United Way. They fill in the gaps for many people in organizations who need their assistance. Also, myself and Mayor Pro Tim Witten and Mr. Mormon and Max went to the new teacher breakfast last week, and what an encouraging time to meet our new teachers in Auburn City Schools, to hear the stories about where they're from, how they got to Auburn, and just the genuine excitement on their faces as they get ready to start school on Friday. We appreciate being invited to that every year. It's a very special opportunity. Tonight also, while we're sitting here, is the National Night Out that is going on out at Duck Sanford Football Stadium in the parking lot, and this is an annual community engagement event that our public safety, primarily our police department, handles and invites the community to come and get to know them and what their purposes are and who they are. And I just appreciate Director Matthews for all the effort that goes through to make those connections with our citizens. It's a great use of time. On a personal note, I just want to give a shout out to a good friend of mine, a guy named Bill Bolt, who a week ago Sunday swam the English Channel. It took him thirteen hours to get across the English Channel, and it took him a little bit longer because of the currents, but he made it all the way across. And Bill's a little bit older than I am, so that means that he's in his 60s, and very proud of him for doing that. And what an awesome story. And if you ever know Bill Bolt, ask him to tell you about it. It's great for him, and I'm very proud of him. And that's all I got. Anybody else have anything?
The English Channel wider than Swak Creek.
Just a little bit.
I may Swak Creek.
And that was hard.
Yeah, it wasn't easy.
You?
One thing, thank you very much. The Auburn Public Library is hosting the William Bartram Traveling Exhibit. Now, I have to admit, I didn't know much about William Bartram. I did remember from my elementary days that there was a trail named the Bartram Trail, but I couldn't have told you two things about it. However, I did do a little reading before tonight, and I found out that William Bartram came through, not surprising, Alabama, and he went through Russell County, Macon County, skirted Lee County because it wasn't there yet, and he went on to Montgomery before there was a Montgomery. And what he did was, he was a naturalist. He wasn't like a Lewis and Clark guy. But what really got my attention is the year. It was 1775 and 1776. I thought, holy cow, there was a lot going on in this country in 1776. So come see this exhibit. It started yesterday, and it'll run thirty days until this time next month, and hear what your library experts have to say about this. They'll probably do a lot better job than I did. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack McMurray, and I'm very excited to be back in Auburn and to provide a report on behalf of Auburn University's SGA. Looking back to the end of July, our exec team had the opportunity to travel to University of Texas, Alnollston, and meet with their counterparts from every single SEC university to work on some new innovative ideas and learn how we can do our jobs better on campus. Looking ahead, this Saturday, we will have our commencement for our summer graduates. And on Saturday, August 16th, we will have our bid day for 2,349 potential new members going through sorority rush, a record-breaking number. Fall semester starts Monday, August 18th, and that will be kicked off with the University Program Council's first 56 days, which is days packed full of events for new students and returning students alike. Thank y'all, and war eagle.
War eagle. Glad to have y'all back. All right. At this time, it'll be Citizens Communications on tonight's items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the City Council about anything on the agenda, now would be your time to come forward. Under resolutions, we do have public hearings attached to those decisions related to those four vacations. If you'd like to speak to that, please wait until that moment. But if there's anything on the consent agenda you'd like to speak to the Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with City Manager's Communications.
As mentioned during Committee of the Whole, we just have two substitute pages for some contracts included in item 8E3. It's just minor language changes. They're highlighted what has changed or been added and are before you on the dais. In terms of consent agenda, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I'd like to remove 8 Echo 1, 8E1, please. 8E6? Anyone else? Okay. 8E1.
Item 8E1 authorizes an infrastructure development agreement with AU Tigers Properties One LLC for the Rise Auburn Private Dormitory or Development Apartment Development Project to be located at 712 West Glen Avenue.
May I have approval?
Second. Have a motion in a second, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got several questions. I've already asked City Manager some of these, but just want to expand on them a little bit. The development specifies that there'll be minimum encroachment on West Glen Avenue right-of-way. What is minimal encroachment, and how long will that be in effect?
Great question. I'll have our Executive Director of Development Services, Scott Cummings, answer.
So there'll be multiple stages of encroachment on there. What we'll start with would be, you know, pretty much off-of-pavement type work, but it'd be in the right-of-way, so it is technically in the public right-of-way. For a bulk of the project, we've negotiated an option with them to take not a full lane width, but a partial lane width in order to utilize off-pavement right-of-way as well as pavement right-of-way. And the purpose for that is to allow the trucks to basically veer off the road, load/unload equipment materials from those trucks, and then pull back onto the road in a more easy fashion. The only other options for them would be to, you know, have to back in, pull in, which would take much longer and be more intrusive on traffic.
This maintains two-way traffic.
This maintains two-way traffic. There'll be two 11-foot wide strip for the duration of the project. And then toward the end of the project, they'll taper that back and will regain the full lane widths for the balance of the project.
Okay. That section of Glen is frequently congested based on parking on the sides of the streets. Is there a plan to limit that or change that during the course of this construction?
During the construction, those parking lanes will be removed. We're actually in the process of reevaluating some of those parking lanes. Some of them need to be removed because of proximity to entrances and things, and we're going to be further evaluating those for the whole. Likely, a lot of the on-street parking in this particular duration may not return.
That's because we've had a number of vehicle, pedestrian vehicle, bicycle vehicle, transit bus collisions due to lack of sight distance at the edge of driveways to existing projects. And so what he's saying is ultimately, some of this on-street parking is going to go away during this project, and we will be to you with a plan where we may recommend that a lot of it not return for safety reasons.
But there will be an impact, a short-term impact, if we currently use those spaces?
It would be, yes.
Okay. All right. Again, we talked about this a little while ago, but there's an existing curb cut shown on the chart from Railroad Road to the backside of this property. And I understand it's just, it's going to be, that will not be used anymore. Is that right? There's not going to be any access from Railroad?
There'll be no access from this development to, directly to Railroad Avenue or to the Railroad right-of-way.
For vehicles.
Okay. And since it does abut Railroad Avenue, Railroad Road, then what's the reason that we are not asking for any improvements to Railroad Road?
So Railroad Avenue is technically on private property, the railroad's right-of-way, and, you know, they would have to get permission from the railroad in order to do any kind of work within their right-of-way. And they reached out to them at our request, and were denied making any improvements to the road. All we can really do work on maintaining is the water. You know, we have an agreement to maintain the water and sewer on the right-of-way, but nothing else.
This was news to us with this development. This is a new thing with the railroad. And so, this hasn't been uncommon down the street. We've had other people succeed, but the railroad has changed its view on how they want, what they want done in their right-of-way and what they don't along Railroad Avenue. And this is a recent change for us.
So, but even though we're not going to have any access ingress egress from Railroad, we still require a sidewalk along the backside of the property?
So the sidewalks on the rear of the property is more for emergency egress of the residents. So it's not actually on Railroad Avenue, but it's on private property. It'll be maintained by the development.
And in the past, we have maintained a resurfaced Railroad Road or Avenue, I'm not sure which, even though it's not technically ours. Do we anticipate continuing to do that?
At this point, we would do any, you know, we may do that if given permission by the railroad to do that, but we would have to go to them for that request. You know, currently, we're, you know, we've been given direction from the railroad that that is their right-of-way, and then, you know, it's their property. So, yeah, we would only have to, only be able to do any kind of maintenance by approval from them.
This is an ongoing discussion with the railroad, again, new because of this project. So Councilman Griswold is correct. We've resurfaced it in the past. Other things that were done, we had permission from somebody at the railroad. We, the developer, did. They went to them, but there is a change in how they view this at an upper management level that we're still working through. We'll be working through that with our legal team as well, because there's also questions about who's enforcing parking on Railroad Avenue. Well, if the city can't maintain it and we can't require anything on it, we're not enforcing on-street parking on Railroad Avenue. That'll be up to the railroad.
Absolutely. Okay.
So it's a change. We have concerns about long-term residents that abut Railroad Avenue. We have no indication that the railroad is going to do anything that impacts them directly. They understand that. But this is a fairly new dialogue that's going on, and we're working through it, but we don't have all the information. But that's why a lot of changes that may seem not very intuitive to you guys about why certain things aren't happening. This is a total change over just the last several months, last three months.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And to your knowledge, has the developer been working with the railroad to try to figure out what's going to happen on that side of the property?
Yes, they have. They were well aware of it. They contacted railroad, and that's what initially led to some of the discussions we've had over the past few months.
Okay, thank you. All right. Another subject, the traffic study, the traffic impact study shows that there'll be necessary to do re-timing of the lights at Donahue and Glen. Did that study not show any impact to the intersection of Hemlock and Glen?
It did look at the intersection of Hemlock and Glen, but all levels of service are adequate at that intersection, both pre and post-construction.
So how many, we're adding how many bedrooms for?
Seven eighteen. Seven eighteen.
Seven hundred and eighteen folks going to go from there to campus, and there's no impact on that, on that intersection?
There is impact, but there is sufficient capacity at that intersection to handle what is coming there.
Based on the criteria set forth, it's not making a level of service and how that intersection functions, kick a threshold that would cause them to have to change anything about it.
All right, so there, all right, there's a four-way.
And that projects a current plus a future condition.
That is correct.
Four-way stop at that intersection now.
It is a two-way stop right now.
Yeah. Glen Avenue has the right-of-way.
Correct.
I noticed that the developer is going to continue paving or resurfacing beyond Hemlock on Glen, and that the city will pay for that resurfacing since it's not immediately adjacent to their project. You know, we have a history of developers paying for improvements in other areas, such as Old Sanford paying all the way for, all the way up to University and Donahue. Why would not the developer be responsible for this impact as well, seeing that the traffic study did show some impact, but not significant, apparently? Why don't we have them paying for that instead of us?
So they're having to do, they're doing their work and their widening and stuff. Their restriping is in front of their property. There are transition links that they have to go away from their property to get it back to where it needs to be. When they tied those in according to standards, it was very near the Hemlock intersection. For safety reasons, we felt it was good to go beyond the Hemlock intersection on the approach to it to make those transitions, and because we wanted that for extra safety, that's why we're paying for it.
He's asking, though, and Scott may need to speak to this from the Old Sanford Development Agreement, comparing and contrasting the two, is off-site improvements often with current development agreements are caused by traffic studies that are showing us some sort of nexus to those requirements. And some of that is also a negotiation for both annexation and the project in general with the planned development district.
That is correct. And Old Sanford's a good example of a project that did a lot of legwork early on, did their traffic studies, and came up with that data to come in. And actually, every, all the improvements that they're making were projects or needs that they brought to the table as far as the impacts on their traffic. You know, as Brandy had mentioned, the improvements at Hemlock were not necessary as far as the traffic study, so there wasn't any adverse impact. But the work being performed beyond the intersection of Hemlock and Glen is more for our benefit than anything that we could require them to do.
And they are making some off-site improvements as well at the Glen and Donahue intersection.
That is correct.
As a result of the traffic study and the re-timing necessity, right?
In addition to the re-timing.
What you want to...
They're doing some restriping to lengthen the left and left turn lane storage and stacking at the Glen and Donahue intersection for the eastbound leg.
And that's coming through in their regular development approvals as opposed to the development agreement?
That is correct.
Okay. Changing topics again. Let's see here. Oops. Oh, the sewer line. So I understand that we are planning to improve that sewer line regardless of whether this project happened or not.
The water line?
The water line.
Yeah, the water line.
The water line? Correct. And Eric can speak too. We've been methodically working on a project there. Go ahead, Eric.
That's correct. We started that project several years ago. The first phase went from Hemlock to Byrd, and this is part of a master plan for us. That is a six-inch main going down Glen, and if you were to have a one-way feed, it would have, it would struggle to meet fire protection. So that was on our long-range goals way before this project came on board.
Something we'd be doing anyway.
That's correct.
So what about timing? Would we have been doing this in the course of this construction?
We might have waited.
Or has it ever messed up the road, Glen, right?
I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead and answer the first question. I'm sorry. Is this going to be happening concurrent with this development?
It's already done. We've already put it in.
Okay, that, the whole water main is already done.
We still have to go from the east side of the Arise to Donahue. We'll do that in a future phase. But we're taking advantage of the disruption that's about to start. Go ahead and get in now so they can pave for us.
Okay. So you're... So you're going to get in now versus when were you going to get in?
Probably in the next year or two. We want to do it, but we went ahead and broke it into phases and did this phase now. We'll do another phase later.
So we accelerated something to make this happen now?
We took advantage of an opportunity is what it was.
It's not uncommon if we are, if somebody's going to tear up a road and, and cause, we try to, we try to, despite what people think, we try to limit the pain points to, to one timeframe. We don't always succeed in that. Sometimes we just finish the road and something happens. But the goal here is to do that, to say that it sped up a little bit, probably is, but we do this in partnership on the regular. We have long-range infrastructure plans and when a project's on go, we usually do. But it's not something that's breaking the water board's bank on this.
Oh, no. And it's similar to like we did on Gay Street when Publix came in. We took advantage of that to go in and this old infrastructure, we try to take advantage of projects so we don't double the disruption.
Yeah.
And, and we also don't keep the road tore up for a long time and gets paved quickly thereafter.
So we're going to have a further disruption once this project is done to do the stuff from the rise up to Donahue?
At some point, yes. And we try to time it with other projects when possible. So. That water main was put in in the fifties.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not debating that we need a new water main. That's not a, I'm just concerned about the disruption of, of traffic on Glen and the impact to our citizens from all this. Okay. I mean, obviously the, the developer needs us to, to come to some agreement with them. I just would ask that if there's possible, is there more favorable terms that we could expect on any aspect of this?
We can always certainly ask, that's at the pleasure of the council. If you guys decide you want to postpone this and you have a few hot points and you want us to go back and ask the developer, we certainly will. I don't know if we'll prevail, but that, that's up to you guys. If you have direction in the majority or you want us to inquire about something further, we certainly can.
Yeah.
Whether we can compel them to do it or not, it is different, but we can always ask.
Are there any timelines that we're running up against here on this?
We're not. It would be up to them as far as their timing goes to have this, uh, project open, you know, for the twenty-eight, I guess, school year, twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight or twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Is the applicant here? Do we know? A representative? May I ask a question? Thank you. Is there a timeline that you're working towards with a delay for further?
Yeah, I mean.
Conversations?
Yeah, I mean, it, it kind of outlines what you're, what you're wanting or, you know, what you're kind of asking for. Some of the stuff in regards to like the water line question, um, the water line's being upgraded, but we're coming back and repaving the whole road to make it one seamless, uh, road paving project so that we didn't come back and, uh, put a new wearing surface on the entire road and then the water board come back and patch and cut it and patch it up. So in regards to timing, in, in regards to timing, the city's using our project to get a better paving job for the citizens at the end of the day in regards to the, the water. In regards to, um, some of the restriping stuff, we were restriping, you know, I don't know if you, if you've driven on that section of road. It has on-street parking and it has less than sufficient width for two lanes of traffic. There's, um, constant, uh, reporting of, uh, mirrors on the side of cars being hit, on parked cars and driving cars. If you measure that width, those lanes are eight and a half feet wide to nine feet wide. A parking space is nine feet wide and you're trying to drive down that road thirty miles an hour on posted speed limit. So the road was never built to have on-street parking and two lanes of traffic on it. So we're restriping it to get sufficient widths on those lanes and take off that on-street parking. And so the city's taking advantage of, we're doing it here and tying it in on both ends. We're doing the same thing when we're restriping the intersection. That intersection backs up and there's not enough room for stacking for the left turn lane. So we're extending those lanes back and, and providing sufficient capacity, uh, for that intersection. When you look at the traffic on that portion of West Glen, that portion of West Glen has not traveled very much at all. It's pretty much primarily students in that section and primarily the impact you're talking about here is pedestrians walking to campus. There's no way for somebody who's a kid who's going to school there to drive to campus. The, the campus parking lot is two blocks away where you would have to drive to then take a bus into campus. So like from a driving perspective, the impacts of this development is not as far-reaching as what you would expect if it was in a suburban location and they're having to drive a great deal from South College or something like that.
But Brett, they are sending school, university buses down that road to pick up students and take them around.
There's, there's, there's Tiger Trans at bus stops. There's one catty corner right across the street, um, at, on, at this location as well. But like i- in regards to the more favorable terms, it's kind of like, what are you, what are you wanting out of it? I mean, we were the ones that, you know, we were asked to make improvements to railroad right-of-way. We're the ones that went to the railroad. We've been negotiating with the railroad for over a year now. We were trying to increase or extend the road improvements that, of railroad avenue that happened next door. And we, 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 we got denied. We couldn't do anything. We basically were saying, we were basically told no access, no nothing. And so we've worked with the railroad to get, uh, through this process, but they're not allowing us to improve railroad avenue at all. And, and I, and they verified, city has, we, we've been, uh, hand-in-hand with the city along the whole way for a year, trying to figure out a way to, 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 uh, make that happen. But we are making, you know, we're making improvements along the road, uh, to, um, for, for traffic. You know, so I mean, like when you're, when you're asking for, for more favorable terms, you know, the impact in regards to this water extension, you know, this project's probably paying one point two million dollars in water and sewer access fees to the board, to the water board for the, um, water and sewer access fees. So, you know, there are, um, significant, um, uh, uh, you know, significant infrastructure improvements that are being done as part of this project, cleaning up a lot of the old infrastructure in this area.
What would be an example of a more favorable term that you would want to?
I'd like to see them pay for the, the eleven thousand, um, seven hundred dollars for the restriping work on the other side of Hemlock. As an example.
Okay. Which isn't part of their development? Is that what, so you want them to pay for something that's not part of their development?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Okay. No problem.
Brett, real quick, sorry, I forgot. Is it May twenty twenty-eight is slated for completion? Is that accurate? Just want to make sure that Scott sent that to me and, yeah. So it's more like a three-year build?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is it's a massive site?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we, starting now, we wouldn't be able to deliver for the fall of twenty-seven without.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Or, or any other more favorable terms that anybody else would like to offer as well? So don't want to just leave it out there?
The, the only thing I would like to say is the eleven thousand dollars for that repaving is additional scope that the city's ass- adding on. So this is like, in regards to, i- it's more of, of, of an additional request above and beyond requirements that the city's having. If the city would just remove that requirement and, and we would tie in normally, it, it would meet code and everything. You know what I mean? But it's, it's more of being able to extend, if we're removing the on-street parking in front of this, extending it down to provide the proper clearance at Hemlock that was previously installed. So it's more of fixing an existing condition that was created, self-created by the city in, in regards to now we're tying it in and they're fixing it. So, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, look, eleven thousand dollars ain't going to break the bank. But, but the other part of that too is this is additional scope that staffs identified that they felt like would make the project better for the citizens. And so they were willing to, we're doing all this other work, they were willing to, to, um, you know, they asked us if we would do that as part of that and they would just reimburse us before, for them to mobilize and do all that work, it'd cost you guys twice as much as opposed to when we're paving, you know, all our road front. So I, I, I mean, I just want to make that clear. It's not like it's additional scope that's required by this project. This is more of trying to blend in the improvements to make it better for, um, you know, the, the city's, uh, connection in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Crouch, is that how the staff would look at?
It is. And to Councilman Griswold's point, I, if I understood some earlier dialogue that we had, I mean, the concern is that the citizens of Auburn end up, you know, for a three-year construction period, having to deal with aspects of things. And so some of this is, a lot of you from time to time ask, is this all people are doing? We're giving up right-of-way space, we're giving up tower crane swings, we're giving up whatever. And this has been a dialogue since I've been in the seat that Councilman Griswold's had with me is saying, you know, you don't charge for those things, so what are we getting? So Mr. Basquins also right that they're doing a full overlay at a time. They're doing, they are doing more than that. And I think sometimes for you guys, it's then why are we spending eleven thousand dollars to do something? It is absolutely correct that while they are mobilized, we try to take advantage of them having a contractor out there, to Brett's point, that we don't have to bid or drop a full spec on or whatever. And so it, it's really up to you. You actually control whether or not you agree to this agreement and whether or not we're going to spend that eleven thousand dollars. It is, it depends on how individual council members feel about that. In terms of our ability to make somebody do it, we don't have that ability. We do always have the ability to ask somebody to do something, um, if that is what the council so desires.
Anyone else in the council have a question related to this item tonight, related to the development agreement? Any question for me?
I guess I can form mine as a question. Let me first say that I appreciate the questions of Councilman Griswold and others and their due diligence to look at the details of this. And I also appreciate the work of the staff to, um, guide this project. But I'd like to ask the question, I guess, is this project being done by right? And I would, if so, then I would like to point out that this council as a body is not approving, it's not going to vote on the approval of this project. We're seeking to guide this project. Am I correct in saying that?
You are correct. It, on multiple fronts, uh, this is a by-right project that has been through a development review process with our staff, uh, and a lengthy one at that. And, you know, their applicant's representative, Mr. Basquins, also indicated that. And it's extremely complicated because it is a very large project. So the council is protected by a number of development rules and regulations we have, many of which do not permeate this development agreement that they are complying with, as, as our city engineer brought up a piece of that. The council has no purview over the approval of the project itself to move forward, except for the fact that they need to swing their tower cranes over our public right-of-way, of which we have a tower crane agreement that's, that's in here that's very important. And it's very important because of a liability issue. We don't want anything dropped on anybody's head if it swings over the street and that the city is liable and we don't want that to happen anyway. We also have other items, what Mr. Basquins alluded to. If, we don't have a way to compel them to do the full overlay unless they agree to it in writing somehow. Is that correct, Scott and Brandy? So we will not get the full pavement of Glen Avenue, um, the width of Glen Avenue. They only have to do their half of the road, um, as your memo had read. But there are nuances and, and I think it is very challenging from your seats is citizens might think you're actually approving the project of which you are not. The zoning ordinance already cares for that. And this part west of Donahue and everything really in the urban core, in urban neighborhood west is a by-right project. And so you're not approving any of that. It is the nuances of the development agreement and the tower crane agreement that, that you are approving. I think several of you have had questions just about a variety of things about this project. And that would be normal because the council has not seen anything or heard anything about this until you heard about it in your meeting on Thursday. So I also certainly expect if you need some time to marinate on something, I'm not trying to slow the project down, but it is your right as council members to say, I just didn't know enough about this and I've had this for five days and, hey, I just need a little more time to understand. You're trying to understand its impact to the city. I, I get that. But from a development perspective, Councilman Mormon, you're correct. It's a by-right development.
Anyone else in the council have a question?
Megan, isn't this, uh, isn't this the area we wanted to develop this type of development?
You're absolutely right. I mean, in, the zoning ordinance has written today, and we're going to talk to you in the budget about some changes about the zoning ordinance coming, has written today, absolutely says these should be permitted by right at a certain density and so on in this area. We do have plans and it's already in the current budget, but we're going to be talking to you more. We will be revising the zoning ordinance tremendously coming up. So you're going to get bites at that apple over the next two years.
Any, any guess at how much revenue this type of a stat, a building could bring in?
I don't have a, a guess, but, uh, Councilman Dawson, to your point is it would have a lower valuation now as the property that it is versus spending. And Brett may know what their total investment is, you know, probably over a hundred million dollars. Yeah, a hundred, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty mil- it's a, it's an expensive project, so that, it does change valuation. However, the city, and people are welcome to build these, but I do want to clarify, even though there is a devaluation and it does increase money for schools, property taxes and so on, the city does not go out and, and recruit these projects. They are coming by the size of our market, the growth of the university and so on.
Right. And my only point is to be, to be fair to them, this is where we wanted this type of development to go years ago when we went through the.
Correct. That's what the zoning ordinance asked for and the, the goal was if we were going to have student-centric developments, they would be in this area walkable to campus and particularly this area a little bit further from downtown.
And I certainly understand where Councilman Griswold's coming from on this.
Anyone else?
I, I got a question.
Sure.
I want to go back to railroad avenue. Okay, so when you got with the railroad company and just so they don't, they allow the city to pave the road?
They did at a point in time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But they don't want, uh, the city or anyone else, even the developer, to maintain?
Not what they're telling us at the moment. That could change, but not at the moment.
That's correct. And we're going to continue discussions with them on some things. I mean, we're obviously concerned about, uh, being able to take care of residents who that's their only access, you know, in and out of their house and being able to get public safety and things in there. Those, those are important matters to us and we're going to continue those discussions.
So, um, so my question is during the discussions, if they don't want the developer or the city to maintain them, are they planning on it? Are they planning on?
It's a great question. And so, like I said, our number one focus at the moment is to protect the residents that only have access to railroad avenue. We have no indication that, that the railroad's not honoring that, but our ability to step in and maintain remains to be seen. We are having dialogue, which is positive. They reached out and wanted to have dialogue about this. We're having that now. Our challenge is we've operated as Mr. Basquins has under a certain set of rules and parameters for railroad avenue for many years, and now that is changing. And so we are trying to learn the new rules of engagement. And I want to be clear, the railroad has, has been a partner and, and reached out specifically to have dialogue about this. We're just not finished with it yet and this project has caught in the middle of it and we don't have the ability. They wanted access to railroad avenue as well. This wasn't, you know, collaboratively, we wanted the same thing. They are unable and we cannot hold their, them responsible for what the railroad won't let them do. Same, you guys ran into this with ALDOT with quite a few things. If the Alabama Department of Transportation doesn't allow access for a project or doesn't require turn lanes or whatever it is, we can't make them do it when it's not our right-of-way. But we will do everything we can for the, the residents that are on it and this is their only access. I think they will be fine, but we are there to protect that as best we can.
Because I would think that somebody need to maintain the road because sooner or later it's going to have some wear and tear. And so, um.
Well, and that's part of the negotiation. Well, and that's part of the negotiation. I think you're going to expect the staff, if the city's going to maintain it and they want us to do that, then we need certain access for our residents and developments to help with traffic situations and so on. And we want it to be nicely maintained. And so we agree with you. And unless you guys tell me differently, we'll continue to fight for that.
Keep fighting.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. Does anyone desire the council to postpone this for next, to the next meeting in August? Okay. All right. So we've got a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries.
All right. Item 8E6 authorizes a contract for the emergency procurement and replacement of a culvert along Antelope Drive that is already complete between Thorpe Street and Cherry Street with J.A. Smith in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion of second. Mr. Adams?
All right. I would just like to have staff give just a brief thirty, forty-five second explanation on what happened here. And before you do that, I would like to commend the, how quickly it was done, and also how well it was communicated. So thanks, staff.
And before Mr. Ballard speaks, I think one of the things, and he probably planning to weave this in here, this was a known problem area for us, and we actually had a study underway that was just telling us that this was a big problem that needed to be fixed. And sure enough, it needed to be fixed. Dan?
Yeah, that's correct. So we had a consultant perform an assessment on that culvert, which city council had actually authorized that service agreement with Barge Design Solutions previously. And they had performed that assessment, but the assessment did indicate that the culvert needed repair or replacement. And before that was able to occur, we had a report on Sunday, I have the exact date in front of me, but on Sunday...
July 5th.
July 5th, yes, sir. We had a report of damage to the bike lane on the roadway. And upon arriving on scene, our staff found a sizable sinkhole formation on the side of the road that had damaged the edge of asphalt. We responded by coning it off immediately and then backfilling to temporarily stabilize it, and then engaged with Barge Design Solutions and J.A. Smith to develop a plan for the corrective actions for replacement of the culvert. There were multiple contributing factors to the issues, but the predominant cause, predominant cause for the failure of the culvert was its corrugated metal culvert that had deteriorated. So it rusted through, bottom of the culvert had rusted through completely.
We're moving away from those toward seeing that culvert now?
Absolutely. Yeah. We do not install corrugated metal culvert underneath our roadways.
Wow. Thank you very much.
And we do have, based on the study, there'll be other things coming out that we'll need to repair, and we'll continue to do this. But we appreciate also the patience of everybody in the area, and the patience of the council. Emergency repair procedures as allowed in state law give us latitude for health, safety, welfare reasons to step in and fix something in a hurry. And I also want to thank the contractor. They moved quickly, as did Barge Wagner, to work with us, Barge Design, to make sure we could have what we needed. And so hopefully you didn't hear too many complaints in your ward.
No, I don't think the problem was identified on July 5th, and you guys started work a week later.
We did, correct.
That's, it had been done within four or five days.
As quickly as possible on that one, absolutely.
And we're grateful we knew about this before school started and the university went back in session.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, for your staff's hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding this? All right. We have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So move.
Your motion is second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Resolutions?
All right. Being that we have no ordinances, we have four resolutions. They're pretty identical. We have to do public hearings for all of them, so bear with me. Item 10A1 assents to the vacation of a portion of the public alley located north of Giddon Street and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to Bloomfield Holdings LLC and eight-ten MLK LLC. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second. Have a motion of second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All right. Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 assents to the vacation of a portion of the public right-of-way located on Giddon Street and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to Bloomfield Holdings LLC and eight-ten MLK LLC. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second. Have a motion of second. We'll open the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A3 assents to the vacation of a portion of the public right-of-way located on Giddon Street and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to God's House of Prayer Holiness Church Incorporated. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Have a motion of second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Is there any concern at all about utilities or any other reason why this is?
No. No, it's not needed based on the development and this occurring in the area, and the property's going to the adjoining property owners, including some that have nothing to do with the development itself. But no utilities are in the way. They would have had to have accounted for that.
And we don't anticipate any utilities.
Well, you said, there are utilities there. There will be an easement after this is all finished up. But there are no additional easements nor issues for access through that area. This actually will be encompassed in the new development.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A4 assents to the vacation of a portion of the public alley located north of Giddon Street and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to NEOH Holdings LLC. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second. Have a motion of second. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak. Let's see. No one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We ask that your comments be directed to the council. And you have, we'll ask that you come forward to the dais, give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak to the council.
We're in file fourteen twenty-five, Claude Book, Auburn, Alabama. The reason I'm up here is because the biggest issue, I know y'all just did that whole, the way y'all call it, the X thing downtown on Tumis Corner. Lovely. Oh, we watched somebody almost get hit last night. No, no pundit did it. But that's not the reason why I'm up here. It's the one down South College. It's in Ward Six. It's the, what do you call it, crosswalk thing? Where do you call those little blinky things? Well, that one college of, oh, shoot. Where's the intersection? It's the one where Sonic is. What is that one? Yeah, the intersection where Sonic and the, I think it's Longleaf. That thing is being out for almost three months now, and I've yet to see, I've seen two, maybe two city trucks parked there and one drive off, but they never done anything. And also, I know they just put a 5G cell tower right there next door to it.
When you say it's been down, what do you mean by that?
Like, if you go up there, like, you know, you can push the button, go walk our street and say, oh, yay, let's walk. But now you got Lily, like a guy with a little e-bike, Lily, one was the past, past week, fly right through it, and he didn't know there was the light, oh, we went across, and Longleaf has always changed. And he went across and almost got taken. But yeah, that's the only biggest problem I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Vanessa Echols, six one three, over Brook Lane. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you as members of the council for my recent appointment to the Planning Commission, and to let you know that I will work hard to make sure you don't regret your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. We look forward to your service. Who'll be next?
Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one, Dentson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, mayor and council. Visionaries, I put a lot of hours into each one of my council speeches. Too many times, various council members pick out only certain parts of the speech so they can be rude, arrogant, humorous, and lack of concern. Example, last council meeting on July the twenty-second, Councilman Mormon stated that he could not imagine full-time career as a councilman, as Councilman Griswold laughed, laughter could be heard in the background. The reason you cannot imagine, Councilman Mormon, is maybe you have not gone into the community to see all the real human issues out there that are being addressed, because the city is not your full-time focus. Another example, Councilman Griswold stated that he thinks there's an ulterior motive to making city council position full-time. First, he did not listen to my explanation within the speech. Second, he is right. I and other citizens believe that this council is only city managers issue-driven, with no vision or creativity in addressing many of the needs of the Auburn citizen. This council allows an overpaid city manager with her overpaid management staff to control your responsibilities to the Auburn citizen who voted for you. You think your job is what the city manager and her team tells you it is. The city manager treats the council as though the world is flat, and you cannot go beyond those boundaries that she has set for you by controlling your agenda, which is the Auburn citizen's agenda. Each week, this council bases their decision at least ninety-eight percent of the time on the documentation that the city management team puts, provides in making your decision, because you do not have the time to thoroughly question the documentation. As stated many times before by me, you're blessed with the excessive revenue that we have in the city of Auburn. We take two million, we took two million dollars out of the general fund without blinking an eye, because the city council thought it was not politically good to increase the solid waste fund by three to five dollars per month at that time. But the issue brought up last week about the increasing homelessness, citizens need to be properly addressed. I believe that some of this misdirected two million dollars would have solved homelessness in Auburn. Do you, any of you know the procedure in handling homelessness, what the police does and so forth? I still have not seen this council address the issue with our police department concerning Ward One that's been brought up in the past. This council has become too naive. Please, council, be the visionary that we, the Auburn citizen, deserve and expect. I have any confidence in you, and do not let us down. Thank you.
Who'll be next? Anyone? Okay. We'll close citizens' open forum. Anyone on the council have anything they'd like to say? Conclude. Just want to remind our community that Friday's the first day of school. We've all enjoyed our summer at a little leisurely pace, but school buses will return on Friday morning, and I encourage everyone to get up and go to work about fifteen minutes earlier than you normally would, and pray for patience as you go to bed on Thursday night. It takes a couple of weeks for everybody to get back in rhythm, and then the university will start about ten days after that. And so please, everybody, don't get in a hurry, plan well, and we'll all be settled in hopefully by Labor Day, okay? But we're excited about our children being back and our students being back as well. You know, I work every day with the city manager. I spend hours, fun hours. My office is right across the hallway from her. We have conversation after conversation, and I'm proud of the work that she does, and I'm proud of the work of her staff. She listens to every person that sits up here. If they've got a question, if they've got an idea, if they've got a bone to pick, she vets every one of those patiently, and listens to them and tries to figure out a pathway to help. And I just want them, all those folks, to know how much I appreciate what they do.
I echo that. I think that our city manager does a commendable job, given the amount of employees that she ever sees, and the growth of this community, and the workload that we individually each put her on a daily basis. So thank you for your commitment to us, the commitment to the citizens, and to your staff.
I'd also like to jump in on that as well. In my experience with, only working with two city managers, the language that I hear, and that if people are listening, and I believe I'm one of them, the language that happens regularly from this city manager is, "At the pleasure of this council." That is a term that I regularly hear. It is a regular affirmation of a person understanding the lane in which they travel, and the lane in which us as a council travel. And I appreciate it very much.
And I also want to say something, too. When it comes down to the agendas and stuff, I don't think us as council members really have time to put together an agenda. But we do have a packet meeting before this, before we meet on Tuesday night, on Tuesdays, that we have long discussions, if necessary, and asking questions about things that goes on this agenda. And I think that everybody, I think that the city manager and her staff, they always answer any questions that we have. And there's no time limit on our packet meetings. So I just, I just, you know, don't want nobody to, I don't want the public or anyone else to think that, you know, they just throw together a packet and we're not asking questions, and we're not, you know, we're not there, and they're not there to answer those questions. They ain't just putting together a packet, and then we just, you know, just a man in the package just because. So I, you know, I, you know, that's sort of offensive to even think that, because as a council member, I do call the city manager a lot about things that goes on in my ward, and she takes the time out. Sometimes it may take a little longer, you know, to get the answers that I need. But she does take the time out and get back with me, or send me an email or text, and let me know, and answer questions that I need to know. So unless you sit here in this seat, then you can, then you can understand the time and effort that is put into even coming, I would imagine, even coming up with the agenda. We don't know what's going to be on the agenda, but we do have the opportunity, once it gets on the agenda, for discussion. And it can be long discussions, it can be short discussion, and it depends on what us council members want to ask and make those discussions where they need to be. So that's my take on it.
Anyone else?
Yes, please. Quick reminder, this is what we get every week, okay? And we don't just, you know, put it up next to your head and say, I'm going to vote for everything on here. This same material is available to each and every one of you. It's published every week. It's no secret, you know, that you have the same packet that we get. All you got to do is open it up and read it. If you've got questions, call your city council member and see if we can come to the agreement, or if you've got issues with it, we can, you know, support you, back it up, and bring them up here if we need to.
And Kelly, that's available on Friday afternoons.
Same time we get the hard copy.
Typically, it's posted before it's even delivered to you.
Yeah. And also, the city manager is, provides us a list of upcoming agenda items, which frequently goes out a couple of months. And I don't know if everybody gets that or not. I know, I know all of us do. I know I publish it every, every week when I get it. So, I mean, the information's out there. Just don't be lazy. If y'all are interested in finding it, go for it. Find it. Let us know. We want to do what we can for you.
Anyone else? All right. So move to adjourn?
So move.
We adjourn.